Yes, just let me know when we've got to run. There you go.
All right, we're just trying to share the screen right now.
That's fine. Darling, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, all right. All right, so we will be going into recess for the closed session until after our public session to finish, is it four items?
Two items.
Two more items. So until that, we'll go move forward to the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilman Radcliffe, and then invitation will be afterwards for Councilman.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, which is your republic, the which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and indivisible to all.
If you'd like to join us in prayer, you can bow your head at this time. Dear Lord, we thank you for your guidance and ask that you would continue to direct our path individually and as a community. We ask that you bless and keep us always. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. So I don't think there's any modifications of the session. So I'd like to welcome everyone that's here in person and on Facebook Live or however else you're watching us tonight. I'm going to start with our presentations. First, it'd be Captain Hudson, he's introducing us, a couple of new officers. Mr. Hudson.
Yes, I'd like to take the time to announce we have two new officers here at the town. First is Robert Weber. I want to read a little bit about him. Officer Weber graduated in the hundreds in 2013 from Rappi University with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and a minor in psychology. He worked as a security clerk with the Department of Homeland Security for three years with areas of practice in physical security, information security, and force protection. 2014, Officer Weber was a graduate of Anne Irondo County Police Academy, awarded top honors for physical fitness academics. During his six years of service with their department, he was awarded rank of corporal and obtained the certification of field training officer. The highway symbol, Officer Weber specialized training. He achieved patrol rifle certification, numerous trainings in area narcotics, concealment, dealing, sex trafficking, and confidential informant development and handling. Officer Weber relocated to Virginia and now serves police department here. He was assigned to an uniform patrol division. He graduated from Cardinal Criminal Justice Academy on October 27th. Officer Weber excelled in training, displaying a high level of motivation for all ages of training. Officer Weber graduated number two in his class with a follow-through average of 97.8, a physical training average of 98.33, overall average of 93.63. We're very proud to present Officer Weber to this department. Next would be Officer Andrew Dunleavy. He graduated Rappi University in 2021 with a bachelor's science degree in criminal justice and a minor in leadership in military science. While attending Rappi University, Officer Dunleavy participated in ROPC for four years. He served in the gliding role, including squad leader, crew sergeant, first sergeant, crew leader, operations officer. He learned how to lead and technical operations, planning and execution as well as personnel management. He also worked as an armed security for Rappi on the end of the support during his senior year of college. Officer Dunleavy also graduated from the academy on October 27th. He had also done well in the academy. He participated in and displayed positive attitude nowadays in his training. He's currently in the US Army Reserve as a second lieutenant, military police officer, assigned as an anti-tank and force protection officer for the grade of 1500 soldiers spread across five states. Works in Provost Marshall Office, and we're also proud to recommend your class at this point.
Thank you, we want to welcome Captain. Thank you, sir. Looks like our next presentation will be Friends of Draper Mountain, Karen, if you're ready.
That's good for a walk, but that was a little close. Hi, thanks a lot for having me tonight, I really appreciate it. I'm here representing Friends of Draper Mountain, which is not an official group, but we are just a bunch of hikers and mountain bikers that love the Draper Mountain Trails. And we, have any of you ever been to the Draper Mountain Trails? Hiked them, biked them, anything? Do you already know how great they are? Anyway, we're very dedicated to them, and a few months back, we decided to adopt the top of Draper Mountain as part of the Adopt a Spot program. And we started cleaning up, like the first cleanup was really bad because it had been, you know, pretty much used as a dump. I think people just drove by and threw trash. But since we started cleaning up, I'm happy to say that every time I go up there, it's just like less and less trash, and that's really great. About two months ago, we adopted the bottom part, the off-the-valley road. So that's one thing that we're doing. I'm sure most of you know that Mike McMillian was very instrumental in getting those trails, keeping them up, and, you know, just, he was very dedicated to them. And one thing we would really like, our group would like to do, is to name the trails after him because he put so much hard work into them. I was looking into some possibilities for, you know, like putting signage up, and what we would do is ask for donations, and, you know, once we get the donations, we'd get a nice sign, have maybe a little dedication ceremony, understand the sort of procedure that you have to go through to do that, but that's one of the things I would really like for, to see happen. Something else, I was looking online, and I noticed that there was a survey out about building a bike park, a mountain bike park in Kielaski. I'm not sure exactly where you were thinking about doing that, but two things. One is, if you're going to put a lot of money into that, you know, you already have these beautiful trails on the mountain. But number two is, if you're building this as a way to train young people how to mountain bike, that's a great feeder into the mountain bike trails. So something else I would really like for you to consider is making Draper Mountain Trails a national park. Just, you know, like designate a park so that you can like advertise it, and, you know, people are coming from all over to go there right now. One thing that I learned during COVID is how important it is to be outdoors. And everybody, you know, I met so many people from West Virginia, South Carolina, just all over the place. I was over there at least once a week because, yeah, we'd get out of the house, and where are you going to go? And that's, you know, it was close by. So that's one thing. Then I also noticed Kielaski on Main, I was given this Kielaski Community U, and it has this thing that says, "Activate a downtown bike and pedestrian system." And also it says, "Our outdoor culture will feature an integrated system of trails and parks that makes cycling an option for both leisure and transportation." Already have these beautiful trails, they're right there, you know, so, you know, you don't need to reinvent the wheel. Anyway, one thing that would be really nice too, is if we could update the trail map. I don't know if you've got a copy of this in your packet, but these are the current trails. And the trail map that's up there now was a project by some Boy Scouts or something, and the trail is really, really old and doesn't have anywhere near what's there. There's probably about four miles of trails up there now?
Almost.
Yeah.
Very close.
Yeah, so that would be really nice if we could get those updated. Just, you know, I live in Fairlawn, I come over here quite a bit to go to the trails, and my hiker friends come from all over the New River Valley. And when we're coming over, we're buying gas, we're going to Alice for lunch, we're, you know, we're, you can't get to Valley Road without going through downtown Kielaski. So, you know, we're in your town. And, you know, so I just, I just would like to see, you know, Blacksburg and Bradford have a university, Christiansburg has all the shopping and an aquatic center, what does Kielaski have? You have amazing trails, and you need to really capitalize on it because they're just really great. Josh would like to talk just a little bit about the bike trails themselves, and then I would like to, if he finishes, so Josh, Karen.
How's it going? My name's Josh Carroll, I'm a Kielaski County resident. And I was going to go with Shortback for any trails, and you guys may know it, I'm sorry if I'm boring people, but I'll be quick. I promised my wife I'd find myself, because she had to go through the prison route. In 2010, early work began on the trails between a resident, Don Singleton, someone you may know, along with town folks, Don Holly, Bill Cadego, David Hart, who supplied town equipment to move some dirt on one of the main trails that dropped off the top of the mountain. And shortly thereafter, in August 2010, Mike McMillian and his wife Thang moved to Kielaski City. Mike was a long cyclist advocate with a history of working with bike programs and especially youth and adults, and getting people interested in biking on bikes. And he saw tremendous potential for this area. He walked the trails of Don Singleton in early October, well, October 2010, and he really was kind of off the top of it, so, for potential. He then went on in April 2011 to open Kielaski Bikes, which, you know, went downtown in the training depot. The bike shop really worked as a welcoming center for anyone coming into the area that learned about biking and was interested in cycling, wanted to learn about the trails and what was going on. I moved to Kielaski in 2013, and that was the first place I came to, and it really did open up a network of friends and cycling opportunities for me personally. I know one of the things on the table for these trails is maintenance, and how would we maintain the trails and everything, so I want to talk in a moment about that. Mike really built a community of riders, but he instilled in all of us a sense of stewardship for the trails. When we got to the trails, there was about three miles total. Right now, we're sitting at about, and this is debatable, 11 miles of trails about. And everything up there was built by hand by long years. We went through names, a few of us, I came up, just over 20 people, probably a core group of seven dedicated people though, that show up to do trail work whenever it's called. So we learned best practices, water diversion, bridging, burning, flow, safety measures, eliminating hazards, signage, mapping, and so on. The trails are very well laid out personally. I am a professor of recreation and tourism as well at Bradford University, so I know a little bit of those trails. In my opinion, they're laid out very well because they're sort of a typical ski area where they have one entry point, a midpoint, and everything is spread out around there. And it really helps to disperse users across the mountain. There's semi-directional flow which avoids, you know, any conflicts, potential conflicts on the trail. So there's a lot that went into it, and I'm proud of sort of what's up there personally. I'm going to leave you guys with the trail staff, I'm not going to bore you with it, but we are seeing, in the last two years about, we saw about 700 riders from 20 miles or more away, and that's only people that check in, check in on these apps. I don't use apps, a lot of cyclists don't, so I'm guessing that that's about 50% true. So I'm guessing, this is an estimate, 1,500, maybe 2,000 riders in the last two years from 20 miles further away than locals. We don't check in because we don't use a map anymore, because we know, right? So what's going on, what's the future? Thanks to Karen, you know, we've kind of partnered this sort of mountain bike group that have ride there, and then her group, Friends of Draper Mountains, particularly in the wake of Mike McMillian's passing. But it's further out reached and it's increased the potential for Draper Mountain, and it's really opened our eyes to sort of what we have going there and the value of that, and how important those trails are. I would say that Mike was truly the backbone of everything going on there, and when he passed, it really, it left a very, very big impact on what we have going on. Right now, we have a dedicated bunch of hikers, bikers, and these enthusiasts. And then the other thing, you know, we talked about, and Karen mentioned, you know, recreation and tourism, it's one of the fastest growing tourism, it's one of the fastest growing business segments in the country, and this reason for sure. And it continues to grow, tying it, you know, like quality of life standards and attributes, the things that we all know. Businesses make major decisions being near places where their employees can recreate, so people buy homes based on those things. In Roanoke, I know this because my friend works at the Shute Brewery, they, Roanoke won the bid for the Shute Brewery because of the proximity of trails and their employees could bike to work. They were buying Roanoke and Asheville, North Carolina, no big surprise. And in the end, the employees of the Shutes decided Roanoke because the owners wanted their employees to be able to cycle to work. And that was a major boon for Roanoke. So there could be major economic impacts for these trails, in my opinion. I worked with a colleague when I was at Colorado State University, Pete Fix, he did an impact study, economic impacts of the trails in the line of Utah. That's a long way away, but he found that mountain bikers are bringing in $110 a day. I don't think that's going to happen here, I mean, we're just a bit truthful here, but I did, I worked with an economist at Rappi University in 2018 on an economic impact study of Bike Virginia, which is a, it's a bike group that goes around the state, and they do six days in a different location every year. In 2018, they came to Bradford and Dublin, they split between those two. He's the economist, so beat him up, but this is truly the numbers that we came up with, $2.4 million over six days, 2,500 riders, approximately $1.76 million taking place at the spot where they stayed, they camped actually. And $644,000 was approved in off-site spending. That's for groceries, beverage, fuel, let me get a t-shirt, let me check out Howls and get a soda or whatever. When Mike passed, his wife Thang asked us to keep up the trails and Mike's on it, to keep riding them, keep getting people out there and enjoying them. Of course, we agreed, we all pride. As a resident, though, I honestly and truly see only benefits that could happen from protecting these trails, and as Karen said, the clear choice, in my opinion, would be to name one after Mike for everything that he's done. So, that's enough. Thank you.
So in conclusion, we're asking for three things. We're asking to have the trails made after Mike. We're asking for you to consider making that a park. And we're asking for you to start advertising the trails on your cultural literature because I hardly ever see, I see Draper Mountain Overlook advertised quite a bit, but I hardly ever see the trails promoted, and I think they really deserve to be promoted. I just wondered if you all have any questions? Ross?
Another thing, I would touch bases, I love the bike trail, and I agree with everything you're doing, I actually got a call from a, I'm a big motorcycle guy, travel everywhere on my heart. So I actually got an email the other day from a guy that's doing, you've heard the bike and drag and the motorcycle, you're, you actually, they're trying to incorporate Ross and Track Mountain into one of their rides, which comes through the town of Kielaski. And he asked me about some restaurants that would be quick in, so I obviously give Mike some money, as a quick coffee shop, everything for a stop. So they're going to incorporate this stuff in their rides, so I see what you guys are saying, and, but I've always brought this up too, on the big bike trails, that I'd really like for this council, not only to take a look at a smaller bike trail for youth. I've brought that up so many times. I've seen one at Myrtle Beach when I grew up at the Harley dealership down there, and it's so unique, it's not that much noise, just dirt, few trees, few ramps, few little jobs, little guys, little children ride. I'd really like for us to incorporate, that's just a big thought, somewhere around our park, even with you guys, where this could be done.
And honestly, I mean, I appreciate the bikers, but for hikers, we have a lot of hikers that come here to hike those trails because they're so nice, they're just cleared off, and they're just really always in good shape, and we really appreciate that a lot.
Darlene, I have a question for you. You know, I agree with everything you've said, Mike McMillian told me in our first helmet, bike him. So he, I was a 70s kid, so we didn't want to have him, so Greggy got there and, so I remember Mike well. But, but I agree with the naming of the trail. What I don't know, and Darlene, this is for you, is what our, what's the best way to approach this from a, you know, this, I think it would have positive economic impact. I don't fully know which property, and I assume the town of Kielaski owns all that property. The Valley Road entrance, not sure who owns that. So basically, I think council would need to have some more information on entrance and exits and, you know, where the property lines are and that sort of thing. I do fully agree with the renaming of the trails, and on our monitor soon. So if there's any way we can maybe work with, because I think, like I said, with our long-term economic plan, I think bringing that kind of traffic in the town would be a very positive thing, and I think we're going to need some involvement from the town staff, if that's possible, to kind of, to figure out the details of moving forward with what's being requested.
Well, Mr. Priest, to begin to answer your question, I did meet with Mrs. Starwitz about this property, and I had attempted, prior to Mike's unfortunate death, to try to get some better understanding of what trails did exist, under what arrangement, because I believe I talked to the council shortly after my arrival over the fact that there was no formal documentation of any arrangement with him. And I do think what has been suggested to you all tonight would require some formal expression of an arrangement that this would in fact either be a park that would be managed by the town, and we do not have any longer parks and recreation staff to do that, and while it's been suggested, there are many volunteers who are interested in continuing to maintain those trails. The particular organization that is speaking to you tonight, I understand, or at least several weeks ago, did not have any kind of a nonprofit incorporated status. So I would suggest to the council, if you have an interest long-term in not only maintaining this area, but in marketing, and in my concern in hearing about marketing the area is that until we have some formal arrangement as it pertains to that area, I think we have some serious liability issues that need to be addressed. And I did talk very briefly to the town attorney about this, but we decided to really do nothing until we heard kind of where the council was on the request. But as I understand it, this would involve significant marketing efforts, not just by the street, but by the town, to attract people to the area that would require maintenance, whether that's formalized or informal, and would have to have some specific parameters around it. I believe you do have in your packet a copy of the map that was provided to me as to where those current trails exist, as well as a map that delineates what part of that property belongs to the town versus the county. So my suggestion to you all again, if you're interested, is that you refer the matter to your staff to bring back some more definitive information for you all to discuss. But clearly, the outdoors is a very popular and ever-growing popularity for use of the outdoors, it's why some of our resources, as you know, are already being dedicated to a skate park and possibly a mountain bike park, as well as the improvement of our playgrounds. We realize that we need to have more use of the outdoors, and it clearly would bring people into our community, but we want to make sure that as we bring them, that they are safe, and that any amenities that we have reflect positively on the town.
And I would agree with that. I think if we could spend some time to kind of encapsulate what our, what our responsibilities and concerns and positions are, so we can figure out how to move forward. I recognize it's a lot to digest, and there are a lot of, you know, there's the dells in the details, but if we could start to dig into the details, I think that would be helpful if the rest of council agrees with that.
I agree too. I also might mention that Whitfield has a similar facility called Crystal Springs Park, which is actually outside of the town limits. It's their whole, it's like their gatewood kind of, although it's a bit smaller in scale. And it is a, you know, multi-use facility, it has parking and trails, and a mountain bike portion, and it would be useful, I think, I mean, they must have already done the work on that. So it might be useful just to, if somebody needs to know who the town attorney is in Whitfield, I could probably get in touch with them. But they would probably be a good resource, because they, our ground's already been plowed. And I think it is certainly possible, and I'm sure they have, you know, addressed the liability issue, but I do think that we're actually probably better off with a formal, actually turning it into a formal recreation facility, rather than this sort of gray area it's in now. It's my, my read on, having looked at some of the cases on this. So I think we should definitely look into it, and then hopefully get a, have a formal proposal that we can then run by and go and make sure it's acceptable. Because I do think that this is a real jewel for the town, although it does present some issues because it is, it's all by the town, but it's in the county, and, you know, so.
And just one other thing regarding the, Darlene, regarding the advertisement, I, the gentleman mentioned, I apologize, I don't remember your name, Josh. So Josh mentioned the app, and I, you know, I've used those apps, and it's relatively inexpensive way, I'm sure, to really get it out there, and it's been my experience as being a kind of a novice biker, that you seek these trails out, so I think minimal advertisement and word of mouth could probably go a long ways.
I had to actually really do a lot of searching to find a trail map. Every time I go over there, I find something new because it's just an exciting place, and I will admit that I have gotten lost over there a couple times. So I'm always looking for the maps, and I found it on, what is that, Mountain?
Mountain Bike Project.
Mountain Bike, MBT, is where I finally found that. So that's where I bought that map to print out for you guys. And it's not even 100% up to date because we built a couple trails during COVID, but anyway, we'll do whatever you need. We have a Facebook page, and Darlene has my information, and Mike has my information if you need to go to hold me, so whatever I can do to help. But if we do decide to name the trails, I'd like to meet with the family, get their input, and, you know, do it right. Anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, just wanted to comment, Darlene, I keep thinking of different things, but the Draper Mountain Overlook, where the trails began, or some of the trails that you can access from there, where the signage is, which I think was done by an Eagle Scout some years ago, that's owned by the county. It may be useful if we engage the county in this conversation, I don't know if your organization has done that.
I have, I've worked with Laura Walters, and she's the one that got me started on the Adopt a Spot program. So she's aware of our group, and she's, we have a Facebook page, so she's on this Facebook page.
So I mean, I think that might be a good conversation to start.
Yes, in fact, the Board of Supervisors, Laura Walters, did contact me last week and expressed a willingness, and I think I can say eagerness, to have conversations with the town, you know, as to how we might maximize the use of that property. And they have done some work, you're correct, on. Um, and they have done some work, you're correct, on the county side of the property. And my concern again is not the value of those trails, because I certainly appreciate what it can mean to the community, but I do think, unfortunately, in today's world, uh, we have to dot i's and cross t's and make sure that we understand, uh, what we are marketing and who can be responsible for maintaining it. Um, and I think, you know, the council is already aware of the challenges that our staff has in maintaining, um, the features that we have. So, um, we'll certainly talk with, uh, both the members of the Board of Supervisors as well as staff as we look at what might be the best arrangement, uh, for opening up this area to a broader public, and perhaps is a way out of it.
I think with the reminder to, um, the discussion of naming the skate park, uh, Mr. Ratcliffe, what's about to do?
Uh, I want to, uh, what I want to do is discuss to a couple items tonight. Uh, we have two parks inside a park. I think Ms. Bertram has a route that she wants to name the whole park. I am specifically keying on the two parks inside of this, the skateboard park, the basketball park. In my travels, uh, I have observed, uh, once again, uh, parks that have been named after people. And speaking with an individual at one of the parks, he said, "What we do with our parks, we name our parks after our citizens." You always see parks, everything else named after presidents, elected people, uh, everybody else, but you rarely ever, ever see our citizens, who worked very hard in our community, every even thing, named after. So the idea come up to me on these two parks is to come up with an idea, how we can name these two parks, I think. I was speaking with Mr. East, Captain East, and he had one of the better ideas to, uh, to go along with this, really enlightened me a whole lot. So tonight, I want to gear in on the skateboard park real quick, and on the basketball park real quick. Uh, I got a name for both, and I want to start discussion on, on that, on the first big skateboard park. An individual that I have, uh, for this skateboard park is an individual that spent many years, many hours, and a lot of money out of his pocket, his family, his youth sports, and his county, when we had youth sports in hand. I know because I helped him coach along with people like Mike Tillie, Dan Callahan, Steve Root, Chipper McMillan. We coached football, baseball, basketball, but our specialty was football. When you won and lost, you lose the head coach. One thing that this individual taught these young men was respect. You lose, and you win and lost. You're gonna win every day, have broken hearts and broken feelings, but this individual always had a way of managing and preparing for the next game. I, I wrote down just a few things for this individual, but there's no way I could always put it, I could, I could never put it on paper. I, I could never, I could come up with a lie of what he meant, what he meant to reckless sports. We physically would go to sports stores when we had young men that, let's say, couldn't afford cleats, couldn't afford the silk clothes. I've seen him, and we have done it, took money out of their own pocket to supply these kids till we all maxed. One thing about it, I always said, "You might lose, but you'd be the best-looking team to lose." We didn't lose many. But ladies and gentlemen, if we lost, it was a hard week, it was a very hard week. We spent so many hours in our youth football program, when our high school team was really on the map, they were really winning originals, they were winning states, and just, they was district champions. You had to come through Pulaski, the cornfield, to do anything. Same one didn't want to matter. We used to use them as practice blocks. They're a good football team now, I will give them that. We took our P W football team, because we had to go sit down with the high school coaches and put in the same type of offenses into our youth football team. That's why they were so good when they got to high school level, they'd been doing since kindergarten. They knew these players, inside and out. I never know this guy to ask for one dollar for anything. I, I don't know the amount of money that he's, that he's pulled out of his pocket for food, for travel. We always made sure that our kids on our team had the best, everything was. That's, that's just the way it was. He coached his own sons, both of great athletes. We coached kids, professional football players. There are coaches in college now, they're just everywhere, and it's all really because of this one individual. I, I wrote down just a few things that, uh, I just can't, you know, like I said, I wrote it down, I, I don't, we don't have time, time to not to go through everything, but I want to name the skateboard park tonight after an individual that we tragically lost, uh, which was his son. Uh, he's here now, Mr. Derek Akers, Sabrina, Cam, lovely watch, they're back here. I can't explain how many hours that this guy has put in with our youth, and it's just my, well, you can have skateboard guys come up here just last year, say this guy pulls up, gives money out of his pocket just to clean the park, just to do this. He just does it, it's, it's, this is what he is. He's a personal friend. Uh, his whole family is, is like a family to me. When the day that, uh, the incident happened, uh, we dropped everything, tried to get over to him, he was just, just so well-known, so well-liked, you couldn't even turn on the screen. Couldn't even get up like that. It was blocked. This, this way it is. I would like to take and name these two parks on, I think on, speaking to Mr. East here just said, you can hear, he come up with the greatest idea of it, did everybody. When we named these parks, these two parks, it could be on a two-year rotation for every citizen, that should be, nothing, citizens names up here. Every two years, this plaque can be taken down and presented to the family, but permanently put on another plaque in the park, such as the museum. It will always be there. Tonight, I would like to make a motion. I know the parks are not ready, they will not be ready for spring, if they're ready then. Tonight, the first name I would like to present for the skateboard park is Matthew Cameron Akers, who we lost to depression and suicide. It could also draw attention to this. But I would like to present this and make the motion once the discussion's over, and the Akers' family set back the everyone. It's just a brief payment of what he has given us, to this family, to so many young men and women that have flourished today, that have never forgotten us, such as Jeff King, Ronald Heath, you know, the list can go on with that. Will who coaches high school in Bluefield, basketball, and play, you know, college, the list just goes on. So we have to pay these citizens back. They asked for nothing, but they give so many years for what they did. So after discussion, we can discuss, but after discussion, I am going to make that motion on that part. And then I have a name for the second part. And what we can do is go back with Ms. Bertram, I think it's Captain, they said, or her come up with the, with the resolution to how we rotate these names over the years, since it's two years, and three years, and one year. But every citizen, and it could be, how would we adopt these citizens, it does, I don't care how we adopt, their name will go up there. And after two years, they will go in permanent place in this park, just to let everyone know that, hey, we recognize you for what you've done. I don't know anyways how we do it there. I really don't. Unless you're an elected official, or you've got some kind of big gift, this is for our citizens. So I will basically open up discussion, and I will make the motion on the first night. I appreciate it. Mr. Reese, you break it up, I thought it was a pretty good idea.
Well, I, I have your idea. Um, I think it's a good idea, and I certainly think it's something that we kind of need to, uh, if we're talking about the bike, bike trails, we kind of need to encapsulate, understand what the process is. I do like the idea. I think obviously this, this town of individuals seems to make it work. People that live here day in and day out, uh, it's, 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 uh, they're what it's all about, and that's what, you know, and these folks are, what glass is all about. I think we need to recognize that. I'd be like the idea of rotating, uh, the, the names and, and the, the people that we, we honor, um, and, and keeping that, keeping that moving, and paying, paying everybody their, and, and all the stuff for all of them to do the work.
So, Councilor, can I, so is the, is the proposal essentially, we naming something like the whole facility, sort of, both, both parks and whatever else we have, I put it up there, say that's the citizen's park, just to use a placeholder? And that it would be the, um, the young man's name, I can't remember, Akers Skate Park, and then the whoever else, Basketball Court? And then those, those would be the things that would change?
Yeah.
Because I do think that the only problem with changing names is that you got confusing about what you call the whole thing. I would meet me at, you know, you gotta say, you know, when you say meet me at Calvy, you know, if you're Calvy Park, you people know where you're going, and same thing with Six Streets or whatnot. So, I mean, we, I think that's the only, my only concern is making sure we have some sort of overarching name for the facility, and then I guess we can name, like I do, you know, you have a stadium, and then the field, and then the, you know, and the, the press box, and how those things work.
The whole park is a whole, is the whole thing, but I think Ms. Bertram, uh, she had spoke maybe coming up, let the citizens name the whole park, and that would be a permanent name.
Yeah.
The, the two parks, hopefully we're gonna get some more parks here for, so.
Sure. Uh. Okay, then we can do that with other facilities.
If you did a two-year rotation, if you had three-year, four-year, I, I don't know, but that name would come off, and it would go into a permanent place over here, and then it would be another name put up there of a citizen that, that, who chose, who chose it.
Nominated by their, by their, 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 yeah.
And I think that we just, uh, I, I can speak from the two that I know tonight, and I know you guys have a lot more, I, I know there's more people than what I have, but, uh, I, I can testify to Mr. Akers and, uh, his lovely watch, Sabrina, Cam come through his boot camp. Uh, he was as hard on his boys as, as anyone. I can believe it. Matt and, and Derek was like gas and, and walk. They fought more on the football field than did, but it was all, it was all in good. It was all in good. Uh, but just, and, and you're right, Mr. Reese, the, the, the park must have a permanent name, and I think Ms. Bertram's on the route with that. Uh, but that's, that's what I wanted to discuss tonight, and I'll make the motion when everybody's ready for the first name, when the park is ready. I don't know when it will be ready. We're hoping maybe spring, that, uh, fences go up, and, uh, Ms. Bertram is working very hard on getting these parks open, and hoping like, Mr. Reese, that we have more parks coming. We're, we're really working on our parks. Uh. So, anything?
I, I for one, just say, I think maybe getting that started with a better family, better person, you know, to start that process out with, I think it's, uh, it's absolutely the right thing to do. I think it would be important as we move forward for the community at large to have accountability to, you know, some type of, or not process, that the community itself can have input into that process. But I think that's really, this would be the way to get started. Thank you guys for coming.
All right. Uh, I am very proud tonight, David, to make a motion that the skateboard park, the first series, will be named after your son, Sabrina, and your brother, Matthew, Cam, Akers. Super.
And may I have a roll call for that, please, ma'am?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I didn't hear the second.
Right, it was Mr. Ken.
Mr. Ken?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Nice, I want to say, want to say. Just real quick, I think everybody's here, uh, picture of his, uh, two children that live in Florida, that Jacob hooked up with skateboards when they were here for my event this summer. And, uh, uh, I think, again, I think myself getting into coaching might have influenced my son, both of them. Sometimes that's a good thing, so that's, you know, it's, it's not, it's not an easy thing, but, uh, I do appreciate this, and, uh, I do miss the town recreation department. We had some good times, you know? We had some good times, we, uh, had some good children, good kids involved there. And county-wide rec is, it's okay now, but I mean, a little bit closer than it when we were in town, you know, but, uh, I do appreciate, thank you, Ms. Bertram. You deserve it. Thank you. Okay, I have, uh, the next from the basketball court, and, uh, uh, the next individual's name that has dedicated his whole career somewhere to public service, whether it be in the military, whether it be working on million-dollar projects, he has always dedicated his life to the public service, either county, Pulaski, Pulaski County, and the million-dollar water lines that was put in. The individual worked tirelessly. I don't, I don't know that he's ever asked for anything, uh, he would go out and work sick. Uh, I had a great opportunity to be working with him several years, but more than that, I had a great opportunity to know this individual, and to learn from this individual. Whenever I run up on a hard project, whenever I run up on something I didn't understand, I know I could pick up the phone, and I know I could call my mom and my father, the very young age, and very young age. And, and I would say that he's as close to my hero as you've ever been. He answered every question that I ever had asked, and, uh, my wife thinks it ain't nothing like him. If I didn't pick this name, I'd probably have to go live with Derek in spring for a while. So, uh, but without further ado, I would like to see the first name on the basketball court to, uh, represent an individual that has worked his entire life in this community, and has helped, I, I, it's, I don't know how many people he's helped, and I think tonight he is very deserving of his name being the first on the basketball court, and that's my good friend to my rock, Mr. Langton.
He doesn't even mention his basketball career.
Yeah, he has a baseball career in there too.
All right, the first motion, that, I'll make the motion, that Ken's name will be the first one on, on the basketball court, our name, after Mr. Ken for the first round.
And may I have a roll call for that, please, ma'am?
Yes, for Mr. Ken. Mr. Ken?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. East?
Aye.
Mr. Ratcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
It's like you're gonna ask it all, but, and... It's like you're gonna ask it all the time, don't you? With that woman amongst the public comment area, I have one here. Debbie.
Moe Hay.
Okay, Moe Hay. If you'd like to come up to and state your name and address.
Debbie Moe Hay, 140 Door Highway. Unfortunately, I'm, you know, I'm gonna be such a downer after such an uplifting evening. I need to go back to the water main break. And for most people that just kind of, you know, you boil your water for a couple of days and then your life, you know, just went on. Well, I brushed my teeth with my water at home the first time, October 25th, because my water was on and off, mostly the color of, well, Jerry dubbed it coffee with cream. And I got to know Jerry pretty well because Jerry was always coming over and flushing the line. And they couldn't figure out exactly what was wrong. Now, I was encour, well, I was encouraged, as a matter of fact, I was requested to run my water by the town engineer to help them because, you know, you could only flush the water for a period of time out front. Obviously, that's disruptive, you know, it was a large amount of water and it took a long time to clear up. Jerry and I had a little bit of a routine and he would flush it until it was clear. He would take the meter out and then ask me to run it for about 10 minutes inside so that anything that wasn't clear would move back. Then he'd put the meter back in and like would go on. Well, I removed my shower curtains, my toilets are stained, my, I removed sheets, I removed mush balls, I removed, I removed clothes on top of clothes because the water wasn't red. Now, when the water appeared clean, I, what I would do is I would run water, put it in a clear mason jar and let it sit. And then when the bottom became red, then, you know, it's obvious that it's not, it's not okay yet. I got, I would, I had a regular check-in with Rick every day with the town engineer's office. I was out of town for 17 days due to some family medical problems in October. Well, my bill for water was over $100 in October. Now, there were numerous people on our street that had similar problems. Mine seemed to be the most exaggerated and exacerbated. I ran the water because I was asked to do so and I had the assurance that I would not be charged for it. Obviously, we're not gonna charge you for it. We're asking you to run it. So on the fourth time that I was told this, then the town engineer said to me that he would talk to the town manager. I later had a conversation with the town manager and she said that she would addraise my bill. Well, I was buying water the whole time to drink, to wash my vegetables, to brush my teeth. The other time that when I, when the laundry just got too big, I mean, here's the other thing. No one in the town said, you know, this water is bad and you don't know what's going on. The town engineer said to me, it's a sealed system. We don't understand why yours is brown and 10 houses up it is not. So then my neighbor took a sample to the health department to ask them, please test it. She has cancer, so she has to be careful. And they refused to test the water. So I, and this may be pure coincidence, I'm not saying that it's not coincidence, but I, I hadn't known the doctor. I couldn't tell you the last time. But I went to the doctor four times during this and even, even broke out in blisters that the doctor couldn't identify and he ended up giving me like something that, you know, medication you give for somebody who had an anthrax, so, you know, something crazy. Because it wasn't, I thought maybe it's shingles, you know, maybe, you know, maybe it's shingles. Well, it wasn't shingles. And it wasn't chickenpox, but it was blisters and they persisted. So I ended up going through all kinds of crazy medical stuff during this time. It might be a coincidence. I was told, hey, fine, you can, you're welcome to file a, an insurance claim. But I never got a note that said, here's how you do it, even though I spoke to multiple people, you know, in the town. All of them were extremely polite. But also during this time, I wasn't offered a voucher to do my laundry, even after they knew that to do my laundry was to ruin it. I wasn't offered a case of water when people knew that they came outside my house and turned that on from the street and it was the color of coffee with cream. So I had a couple of, I had a couple of problems. Number one, my water was contaminated. I didn't boil it to drink it because it obviously had a solid in it. It's never been identified. Now, when I went away this month to care for my daughter, Nathan called me when I got back and he explained to me that some valves were either open or shut, some were along the line, and they've gotten, that solved the problem. So apparently when the water main broke, there was some maintenance that was done, there was something that was done, and there were some things that weren't quite done. And that created a big problem for me. So I'm bringing my problem to you because I think it's a problem on multiple levels. Number one, I'm just one person. So they wouldn't have broken the town to offer me, hey, the laundry, here's a voucher. Go do laundry, don't ruin your laundry. Hey, why not? That's a nice thing to do. Or we know, we don't know, we cannot decide what's in your water. We don't know what it is. It's a mystery to us because the system is sealed and we don't understand why your water is brown. But not one bottle of water was even offered to me. And then to add insult to injury, water that I cannot use, that will ruin my clothes and did. And not to mention, you know, your toilet is red, someone comes over, you know, you scrub, 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 and then the water, the water sits there and then it's red again because whatever's in the water settles to the bottom of the commode. It's very obvious. As a matter of fact, she came over to my door and I said, well, is your commode red? You know, is it, can you scrub it up? Anyway, so I would, and I brought, I requested my, my water consumption, you know, for the last two years, so even with being home, my water bill has been a bit reduced for this month and I was gone 17 days. But I wouldn't have run my water, you know, into oblivion without being specifically told that it would be helpful to them to see if that could possibly clear it up because they couldn't, and they don't want to run the water on the street for that long. So I would like from the time, I would like to know how to file an insurance claim. And I would like for my, I would like my water bill to go back to the day of the water main break and be fully done. Because I couldn't use it and I ran it for accommodation. And when I did use it, it actually ended up costing me more. Now, I understand that if this was a whole town-wide thing, that would be different. But it affected a few people on the street and, you know, moving me to the new water line was called the nuclear option. But if we're gonna have that kind of problem, then why not move the whole street over there if it's available? I mean, that's, but I did wanna say, there were a number of people, everybody that I spoke to was very polite. But my problem wasn't solved. And I, I think it's, I think it's wrong to charge me for a service that I could not actually use. I think if I went to a market and I had a problem with something, then the customer service level would be different. And I think that probably all of us should be thinking about that, you know, we're consumers and customers. And is this really, is this the right resolution? And, and by the way, my bill wasn't adjusted. It wasn't averaged. My bill this month is larger than it's been since, I think, May of 2020. So that's, I would like to leave it to, to your discussion.
I do have pictures. See, I wanna see some of the pictures of the water.
Yeah, sure.
I, I think we, we understand that that was a mess. I don't, I don't wanna speak for anybody else, but, you know, I wanna say, I'm sorry you had to go through that because that sounds like it was unpleasant at the very least.
Well, and, and, for a long time.
No, obviously. But one quick question. Has, is the water back normal now or is it not?
Well, it is clear now. I still run it. I don't drink anymore. We did, when, when the town, when the, when the health department declined to, to test the water.
Yeah, the, the health department doesn't test.
Well, they didn't, they didn't give any instructions.
The health department only will test water for septic and well people. That's their, that's their, and so that's their, that's their jurisdiction.
Right. So she went to private rack because with having cancer, she was pretty much.
I actually, I actually tested my water because people got sick in my house and so I wanted to make sure that I actually have a paper test in, in Hillsville too. And it turns out, no problem.
Well, which is great.
Which is great. And so the issue has, as far as you know, it's not discolored anymore.
Right. I did, I did wash, my big experiment was washing the little wipes.
Okay.
Thankfully, I had too many clothes, so I only, you know, I rubbed the stack up really high after I washed it once. And I did, I did send the town pictures of the sheets with the rust stains, pictures of the towels with the rust stains. But, and, and she was also instructed, and correct me if I'm wrong, you know, that she could file an insurance claim. But no one, but no one sent information on how to do that, who to contact, what to do, any of those kinds of things. But, and probably the most distressing part of this is that literally probably 10 people knew, would recognize my voice on the phone because I was calling to check in, report because they asked me to, all of that. And not a single person said, you know what, we have, we have six cases of water. You don't have to buy it. But, you know, we know you can't drink that. We wouldn't drink that.
Sure, sure. I haven't found out.
So there was no, you know, there's just the compassion part of it. Everybody was like, well, gee, I'm sorry you're having a problem.
My question, by the way, this answer is, you know, I've never had that many. But if you have issues with water inside, is there not a way the town can actually take a sample from the faucet and check it?
It depends on what you're checking for. I think you can check for like, what they call, what's it called? Like solids, like biological solids, like that would, would make you sick. And then there's also what I think, it sounds like what you had is more sedimentation of some kind.
Well, definitely it was rocks.
Right. It's, it was a, that was, that's a mineral that has to be sent to a lab usually to test this. That needs machinery to do that.
Ms. Burson?
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Council, I'm very familiar with this situation and the fact that we had numerous visits to this young lady's home in order to solve the problem. And she is correct that finally the solution was identified, that yours ain't now, that should have been open, that was not. And my understanding is that her water is clear now. I also understand that she was advised to file an insurance claim. I apologize if she wasn't told specifically how to do that, but it's as simple as creating a list of the damages as you have identified them. If you have pictures, that's helpful. And then we turn all of that over to the town's insurance carrier and they're the ones that actually made the decision. But if you would like to write down the name of an individual that you can call or I can have her call you tomorrow because you do have your number, so that you can put together whatever your list is and we can forward that to the insurance company. This was an issue that was baffling to the staff. But my understanding is that this young lady spoke not only to Rick, but that Bill Pedego was involved as well and we were determined to find the solution. Unfortunately, it took longer than anyone wanted. But we kept at it until we discovered what the problem was. My apologies for your not knowing how to file the insurance claim, but we'll certainly get that information to you as soon as possible.
And, and Ms. Burson, just for the record, would that insurance claim include excess charges for utility fees and stuff like that?
No, if there were actual, and I, I'd have to go back and look at the records and I'm not at the office, as you all know, this evening to do that, but a lot of the time that the flushing occurred, it didn't go through the meter so that there were not excessive charges. We do have a mechanism within the utility department to do adjustments. Those primarily are related to when there are leaks. But if there were excess usage that we could attribute to our asking individuals to run their water, then we are willing to make that part of the agreement.
Bill Pedego asked me, is it gonna be very helpful?
Sure, no.
For me to run the, run the water? And he instructed me, actually, we even talked about one sequence where we went furthest from the source of water coming into the house and, you know, going down and then opening the, the water, doing a reverse procedure. And then we reversed that.
Sure.
So, and, and I, and I said, well, how, he said, just let it run. So, you know, I said, well, you know, all right. I said, I'm gonna be home all day. He goes, run it all day? So we need to get the water, and they couldn't have somebody outside where they'd run the water. We have to man that, so.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense.
Ms. Burson, I think, I think, and I'm looking at one screen of your friends and so I have to look behind, which is, it's a great place for that. So I, I think it would be, it would be, it would be in, in order given that, you know, the circumstances. Ms., is it Moe Hay?
Not Moe Hay.
Moe Hay, okay. So, given, given, you know, that, that obviously Ms. Moe Hay not having potable water in her house created a lot of issues for her, I personally don't see a problem with, with giving some rebate on her water and not making her pay for something that basically was of little use. I understand that the water ran. We don't know how to quantify that, you know, it's a ton of faucet. And it's a logical thing that, that Mr. Pedego told you to do. I fully understand that. But how much water was consumed, we don't have any idea. So I, Ms. Burson, I would, I would make the recommendation that we, we some way, whatever the terminology, we, we deal with these water deals.
Let us take a look at the usage. My recollection, and it could be faulty at this point, was that we were not seeing excess usage. Now, I think what this young lady is suggesting is even though she had the water, she couldn't use it and was running the water at different times, as I understand what she was saying. When she ran it, it caused some damage to some, then, you know, a bit of bedding, that kind of thing. But the water was being used, it just wasn't of a condition, you know, that made it in her mind drinkable or usable. But we'll take a look, look at it first thing in the morning as to what that usage has been, been over that period of time, as well as make sure that she has the correct information about how to file an insurance claim.
Respectfully, I was just like my bill before, I was, you know, if I was using it, it was out of. And, and it certainly, and certainly the bill would have looked completely different if I wasn't instructed, because I couldn't use it drinking after I ruined those, my items. Now, I did take a shower and my shower curtain was completely orange completely.
Oh, oh, for the information, we're gonna do a huge amount of work on our water lines next year.
That's great.
I would say, Ms., I, I am glad to hear that all the staff was really nice and supportive.
I spoke to Andrew. She was super, Jerry was hilarious, you know, and he, he was really, you know, for a trying situation, he would come out, his personality would hit. Mr. Pedego was always very, he was very professional. He was very nice. Rick had my regular call. Mr. Pedego gave me this extension and said, I said, well, I don't believe me. I just said, no, it's still very, no, it's still very, no, it's still very. And I had occasion to speak to Ms. Burson several times and every. no, it's still very, no, it's still very, and, uh, I had occasion to speak, um, to Ms. Burtson several times, and everyone was very nice. And, and it, but I will tell you this, if you ever want to choose Employee of the Year, choose Chris. Chris is the most amazing man. I, I will tell you a very quick personal story, there was a guy, and he ran the sand truck, the snow truck, and the, and it was cheatering right on the edge of the ditch at my yard, okay? I mean, if you walked up to it and it would have fallen over, and it was forcing, okay, so he's, I'm sure he's embarrassed to death, but that's a huge truck, it's a huge rock, it's going to tear out my fence, it's terrible, but Chris came out there, and he had all this equipment, and he. With, okay, wait, they didn't, they didn't spill any sand, there was no sand in the ditch, that truck was riding, and it was all because that man stood there, and he's amazing.
Uh, who asked, Ms. Burtson asked, waiting to hear a question, it's, uh, they, good scene, but, you know, that's happening, but, uh, uh, she brings up a very good question, uh, Ms. Burtson, if, is there any way in the near future, like, we, we have water breaks, it could probably be twelve, thirteen, fourteen hours that that water's down, um, if you have kids or anything, is there any way that we could have, uh, maybe a, if, a voucher to give to the citizens that, and, and I'm asking you this, you could, at, at least they'll get a case of water, or two cases of water to give them through, because water, uh, is back on, is that anything, am I, is that possible, or is it, I mean, although I've been out of water for, you know, ten, fifteen hours, just being a wife, we can get, uh, we can make, if you have small kids, and you got the whole block out, it's very difficult, uh, I don't know. If there's something we can look at down the road, or whatever.
Well, we did, we did pass out water, um, out of sight that was located near the golf field, uh, for those individuals that wanted to come and pick it up, uh, that was a result of that extended time that you mentioned, that we did have the break, but we did not deliver water, you know, to residents, um, we did make people aware of that availability, and again, um, it's a resource limitation on our part, from the standpoint of, you know, having people to go, uh, do that, uh, you know, pass out items, certainly, you know, if it was extended beyond that, we would have had to look further, but that was a very unusual break, because I think you all know, um, and even afterwards, we had some concern as to certain valves that were not functioning properly, uh, we now have, uh, the capability, uh, because our people have been trained to do some valve replacement ourselves, which was part of the reasons for the delay, uh, but we had for several months with one valve, uh, but I just don't know of an activity that we would have that would create vouchers, as was suggested, or, you know, make, uh, water available, uh, certainly when you had your tornado some years ago, there were resources that were made available to do that, but again, we can take a look at it, and I can even have Mr. Pedego come in to one of your work sessions and talk about just how we respond to these particular items, um. I don't have an easy answer to your question, I guess, you must correct answers.
It, it seems to me, Ms. Burtson, this was a, was an extenuating circumstance, uh, I think a couple of things align. The major water break, which we hadn't had a break like that in some time, and then the valve, I guess, not being opened or closed, or whatever, um, so those things kind of aligned to create this problem, but I, I think this is the exception and not the norm, at least based on my experience, do you think?
Well, we were actually prepared and ready to actually, um, create a new line and a new connection for this, uh, young lady if we had not found the solution, you know, being the valve, so it was a very, very unusual every day, um, somebody was at her home, you know, fine to correct the problem, and so it's just a, a useful set of circumstances that I hope never are repeated for anyone on orbit, you know?
I would also just like to say that the water main break is announced on Facebook, but I haven't been on Facebook in months, um, and you're not on Facebook, so, anyway, we found out because I wondered, you know, we called the town. But I spoke to Angie, and I said, Angie, I also went to the, the website first, and there's nothing on there, I said, you know, your, your website, people, it's a super easy thing to put a ticker, and she said, well, might be, because there was nothing on the website about the water main break, or the, you know, those things, and, um, so Angie said, thanks for the suggestion, I'm going to hang up with you and call him right now, and I'm telling you what, in twenty minutes, it was on the website, and so I was thrilled, and she said, that, that's a great idea, I don't want to do it, and so she, she made that phone call, and then the boil notice was on there, and that's why I checked from there on out for updates, anyway, so that's just a kudos to her, and then a kudos to whoever does the website for turning it on and off.
Darling, can we also look at her bill, um, I know that that bill also would include trash and stuff, too, so at least the water, can we, I mean, can we look into that a little more, even that, because I feel like she didn't use the water, so, and take care of that part, anyway? I know you want to, but will you please?
She, she, uh, Mr. Pedego also asked other people on the street to run their water, and I don't know if they're going to speak.
Well, we ran our water for like, maybe an hour, you know, because, you know, Jerry told us to, to run our water for an hour, you know, so that, to get the, the orange, red, whatever color, you know?
Get it settled and start.
To get everything going through our, our, our home.
She's not walking, and then, yeah, and then it was just getting red, which is so weird.
And she was there for, I know, I did four days, every day for four days, doing this, in the beginning. In the beginning, yes, in the beginning, yeah, and then they would wait for people, I was down, and they'd say, hey, come out today.
Well, we'll continue looking through it.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good time.
He's got really, he has really good people in the town.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda, um, you know, but if not, if you will look at it and consider September twenty first, twenty twenty one council work session minutes, and then if you can do a motion to accept them, please. Move, please.
Thank you.
And may I have a roll call for that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Members of the Council.
Yes.
Mr. Dawson.
I think we need to make our investment through the election, it's October nineteenth, maybe next.
Mr. Reeves.
Hang, hang on just a second.
Mr. Reeves.
All right, Ms. Burtson, I, I think Mr. Dawson pointed out that the, um, the agenda says consideration of the September twenty first meeting minutes, but it's actually the October nineteenth meeting minute, I don't know if that makes any difference, um, but I think we can, as long as that motion is to approve the Tuesday, October nineteenth, twenty twenty one minutes, I think we're fine. I think that's what we all wrote on anyways.
Just, I would just re, remove it, resecond it, and deal with the rest.
Absolutely, it's, it's the October nineteenth, not September twenty first.
So let me, let me re, Mr. Penn, would you mind removing for that?
Yeah, before Oc- Oc- October nineteenth?
Yes.
I'm thinking of the year, it was October nineteenth.
Second.
All right, and now may I have a roll, roll call, please, now?
Mr. Penn.
Yes.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Reeves.
Aye.
Mr. Rattler.
Aye.
Mr. Reeves.
Aye.
Can we just do a voice call for that? Can we just do a voice call on the picture?
If you want, I, I'll double check what the robbers will say, but I mean.
I think we can.
We just have all, think like we've all done it, but.
We need to do a voice call. I think we do.
Oh, okay. We'll probably say, if that's me, that that's done.
All right, we move on to, um, ordinance, so the H and R V Passage to Rail, I guess, Ms. Burtson, you'll, you do that one?
Yes, sir, Mr. Members of the Council, I mentioned to you all briefly at your last meeting, uh, that, um, plans are moving very rapidly toward the creation of a passage rail station in the Christiansburg area, while they are still, uh, looking at several locations and have yet to finalize the precise location, uh, it is to the area's advantage for all of the jurisdictions to go ahead and pass an ordinance, uh, indicating their, um, intent to participate as one of the localities, uh, in this authority that will eventually be created on which, uh, the town, as well as the other entities involved, will have, uh, voting, uh, membership. Uh, I would certainly recommend to the council that you pass this ordinance, it has been passed already in several other jurisdictions in the River Valley, and the antithetical problems of those to occur, uh, in the month of November, no later than the first year of the general bodies, that will be very helpful, uh, to this new authority to have the ordinance passed by the several jurisdictions as we move into the General Assembly time, and they're looking for additional funding for the creation of the station itself.
Regarding the ordinance, I, I realize that several localities participating, is there, do we need to, do we, do we need to identify it in any particular way, or just the, the ordinance, of course, you know, it's, just pertains to us, we have an ordinance number, so, is that required here? Uh, I.
Well, in the body, it says be ordained by the Town Council of the Town of Plaski, Virginia.
Yeah, it's just limited, it looks like it's just limited to us, this ordinance, I think they are also.
It is particular, the, the ordinance is just related to us, and then you will actually be asked to create, after all of the individual jurisdictions have gone through this process, there will actually be the authority creation, there will be another document.
Right, so I guess, so my question is, do we need an ordinance number assigned to this document? I, I just don't have the answer, so.
Um, you prob, yes, probably, this is the one that was provided to us by the County District Commission, but we can certainly add an ordinance number to that, um.
Do you want to just make it?
I apologize, because I'm out in the office, and I can't tell you where that number is, I think it's.
I think we have, we have forty nine and fifty coming up later, so do you want to make it fifty one?
But those are, those are resolutions, not ordinances, so, you'll give me a moment, after I look at last time's minutes, I think I can tell you what the ordinance number would be.
I don't think we have any ordinance in our last meeting.
We do, we had the, uh.
No, you actually, my, my, all my resolutions.
Resolutions, uh.
And then the, um, project in this.
It's only one, fifty and fifty one were the resignings.
Are those, were those ordinances?
But, but, because they're still on the ordinance, too.
Mm-hmm, okay.
There's special exception for.
Actually, the second one was ordinance fifty, uh, twenty, twenty one, fifty one, so this one would be twenty twenty one, fifty two.
Okay. Unless anybody else does, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty one dash fifty two, creating the New River Valley Passage to Rail Authority and authorizing the execution of the agreement.
Say. And may I have a roll call for that, please, ma'am?
Mr. Penn.
Yes.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Reeves.
Aye.
Mr. Rattler.
Aye.
Mr. Reeves. Mr. Mayor, Members Council, I apologize, as I think you all know, and maybe the public is not aware of, we have not had, uh, the Turk able to participate in these meetings for, uh, the last couple of months, and so I'm kind of doing double duty, and not obviously doing a, a good job at it, and making sure we have the, so I apologize for that, and we'll continue to try and do better.
Oh, I think it's fine, we can always add it later if we need to, and then bring that, um, we'll move on to Resolution twenty twenty one dash four nine, amendments for the Town Personnel Manual, um, Ms. Burtson.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, uh, we have provided you with a, uh, brief summary of the changes, uh, the actual changes to the Personnel Manual, I would tell you that, um, the manual has not been completely updated since two thousand and fourteen, even though, uh, you and previous councils have, uh, provided some updated items within the annual itself, so we did a complete, uh, review of the document, and, uh, tried to, uh, not only simplify the existing policies, but to find out where there were any inconsistencies, and we did find, uh, several of those, um, changes that we think are particularly important to, uh, the council and to your employees, and we've identified the pagers on which they are found. Uh, we are prepare, proposing a lead sharing program, uh, that mirrors the one that the state has, uh, we are clarifying the relationship of family members, uh, for the purposes of the nepotism policy that we have, and we've updated the drug use policy to, um, reflect the current state of the legislation on marijuana and continued requirement of town employees to remain drug clearies, since that is a requirement of organizations and institutions that we see federal fund.
No, I, I think I raised a few questions about some formatting issues that Ms. Burtson has, um, uh, fixed, um, since I, I reviewed it earlier this week, just, nothing, nothing significant, just that there were, it was referring to sections that were sort of described using different descriptors, from the New World.
Those changes should have been placed at your, uh, seats for.
We, we did get those.
Not being the, uh, materials of the.
It makes a whole lot more sense now, I was reading through it, just because I was curious enough, I couldn't kind of make time for hair, but now it makes perfect sense, so thank you for whoever went back and did that, because I think that's, all right, so unless there's any other questions, I'm going to move to adopt the Resolution, what is it, twenty twenty one dash forty nine, Amendments to the Town Personnel Manual.
And may I have a roll call for that one, please, ma'am?
Mr. Mayor, again, I'm sorry.
We lost it.
We just lost it.
We'll move on, I'll see if we're in there for the roll call, Mr. Penn.
Yes.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Reeves.
Aye.
Mr. Rattler.
Aye.
Mr. Reeves.
Aye.
Then we'll move to Resolution twenty twenty one dash, um, zero, Amendments to the Fiscal Year twenty twenty one dash twenty two Budget. All right, you back it, Ms. Burtson?
Can you hear us?
I'm sorry, I would mute it, uh, the resolution has, uh, two items for carry forth from the previous year's, uh, budget, a small amount for fire insurance programs and balance from the CARES Act, uh, those would be added to, uh, the current year's budget, so you see on the resolution, the new amended total, uh, for fiscal twenty one, twenty two is nine million, one hundred and three thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and fourteen cents.
Mr. Mayor, I made it that we adopt Resolution twenty twenty one dash fifty concerning amendments to the fiscal year twenty one, twenty two budget.
Say.
Say.
And can I have a roll call?
Mr. Penn.
Yes.
Mr. Penn.
Yes.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Reeves.
Aye.
Mr. Rattler.
Aye.
Mr. Reeves.
Aye.
Would that move on to the Council comments, Mr. Penn, do you have any comments, right?
I don't know. I looked, the, the, the government admitted to you, some point, and, some, somebody said the, that's where we go to break the council of the day on recent events. So, during the next meeting, I will, I will speak as, as well.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Dawson?
Yes, sir, no comments, go ahead.
Mr. Reeves?
I don't have anything, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Rattler?
That's a good picture, probably, that's all I have.
Um, Mr. Reeves?
I just wanted to say, it looked like everybody had a fantastic time over the weekend at all of these various Halloween activities, particularly the ones put on here in town, looked like a fantastic turnout. I know that we had a whole, a whole parade before the children come by my house on Saturday night, and it looked like it was, it was safe, and I saw police officers out, and everybody was being good and respectful, and everybody seemed like they had a fantastic time. So, I want to thank all the members of the town, staff, who put that together, whatever they did, it did, I think everybody had a, a fantastic time, especially considering last year was such a disappointing, disappointment for so many people, so. That's it.
Okay. I have one thing. Ms. Burton, I asked about the gazebo, and I wanted to let you know when I was walking that I noticed that it's lit up, and it looks very good. It looks a lot safer too, I want to say. And with that, we'll move to your report, so if you want to do your management's report now, may I?
Well, actually, you all have taken away my couple of items that I wanted to mention. I think, as Mr. Reeves said, the trick-or-treating went well in all areas of the town, as well as the county. And I wanted to make sure that you all had noticed that the gazebo was that it's very attractive. We are in the process of replacing several hundred bulbs, maybe more than several hundred, in order to light Jackson Park in advance of the Christmas holiday. Staff has also met with representatives of the organization that traditionally puts on the Christmas parade, and so that will be going forward, and we'll have more details on that as we get closer to the holiday. I did ask, I believe, in an earlier email for any feedback from the council as to your willingness or availability to have the second meeting in December on the 21st, as that will affect the scheduling of the, as done a matter. So, if you all can decide if that's an appropriate date for you all, then we can move forward, otherwise we'll schedule coming into the first of the year.
I don't have an issue with your, like. I'm not sure if I have an issue, but if I do, I could probably be available online. So.
Okay, sounds like it's okay.
All right, with your permission, then we will keep with the December schedule and have those two meetings in the month of December on the 1st and 30th of each month, and I appreciate if you're willing to. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I would like to say one thing, Ms. Burton, thank you for everything you're doing. I know that you had mentioned not having Parker Council, and, you know, things were falling through the cracks, that's certainly not my perception, and I think with what you and Brady and your entire staff are doing, and I single Brady up because he's sitting in front of me, but, and we talk to him a lot. But I know everybody's working hard, I know you've really got the organization running like a well-oiled machine, and I just want to say hi as an individual, as a citizen, certainly appreciate that, and as a council person. Thank you.
So, I'll do the reminder that our next meeting will be November 16th, 2021, the council work session, session, closed session will start at 5:30, public session at 6:30, and now we'll go back into closed session.
Should we adjourn this meeting, or do we adjourn at a minute?
Adjourn, adjourn, please.